Hi, it's Brendan from Crane Appliance. Since 1983, our goal as a family-owned company has been simple, to give our neighbors on the Cape and Islands a great shopping experience. Rest easy knowing our professional team will listen to your needs and help you pick the perfect appliances for your home. At Crane Appliance, we know how difficult appliance shopping can be. Our team is here for you. Crane Appliance, we call the Cape and Islands home.
Carlson Printing, 508-548-7303. Our email address is carsonprinting@al.com. Carlson Printing, for all your printing needs. John's Liquor Store, 729 Main Street, Falmouth, 508-548-2287.
Good evening and welcome to the meeting of the Falmouth Select Board. It is Monday, December 2nd, 2024. It is exactly 6:30. And I would ask you to please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please, as we begin this meeting, please silence your cell phones and double-check that they are indeed silenced. And if anyone is here making an audio or video recording of this open meeting session, please notify me as the chair. The placement and operation of the recording equipment will not interfere with the conducting of this meeting. Any recognitions from the board?
I would like to recognize that unfortunately, we missed, recognized it appropriately at the right time, but last month was Native American Heritage Month, and I noticed it now, and so I figured I'd at least bring it up, even though we missed it officially. So maybe next year I'll try to remember earlier. So just put that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Any other recognitions?
No.
Okay, how about announcements? Any announcements from the board?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Mr. Muscally?
Yep. As the layers on to the Council on Aging, I've been asked to read the following announcement. The Falmouth Council on Aging Senior Center Wall of Recognition Committee reviewed many applications to be considered for the Senior Center Wall of Recognition. It is the policy of the Falmouth Council on Aging that the inclusion on the wall of recognition is a significant event for extraordinary service. After a thoughtful review of all other deserving nominees, the committee selected John V. Mignani and James A. Vieira as the 2024 recipients. We invite family and friends to join us in celebrating our 2024 Senior Center Wall of Recognition recipients on Monday, December 9th, 2024, at 2:30 PM, Falmouth Senior Center, 780 Main Street.
Thank you, Mr. Muscally. Any other announcements from the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll move into public comment. Public comment may be made on routine matters not on the agenda this evening. Comments are limited to two minutes. Please introduce yourself, and since the matter has not been included on the agenda, the Select Board will not participate in any discussion or debate of your topic. Anyone here for public comment? Yes?
I drew the short straw. Good evening, I'm Jamie Matthews, Chairman of the Conservation Commission.
Jennifer Linkin, Conservation Administrator.
We'd just like to ask...
Pull the mic over. Thank you.
Better?
I think so.
We would just like to ask that you guys help us... We're trying to get more support, more commissioners, more participation in the board. We're having an open house of sorts. I meet the commissioners Thursday from 4:00 to 5:00. Everybody's welcome. Looking to get... We have a couple of openings for commissions, and we just appreciate your help getting more people.
Is that in this building?
Awesome.
Thursday?
Yes.
Downstairs?
The 5th, 4:00.
4:00, Civil Defense Room, and we'll be serving light refreshments.
Okay.
Thank you.
Informal, but just, you know, people need to know what we do and what they have to put into it time-wise, effort-wise. You know, it's a misconception that there's a lot of paperwork. But, you know, what it takes to do site visits and the meetings themselves. We're still meeting on Zoom. So I'd just like to get people to understand what it takes, in a manner of speaking, how little it takes. You know, it's not overwhelming. Depending who you ask, I still work for a living, and I can do the site visits and such, so it's not terrible.
No questions?
You again, sorry. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So just to reiterate, there'll be an open house Thursday from 4:00 to 5:00 in the Civil Defense Room downstairs. It's a meet and greet for the Conservation Commission, and we're hoping that people will hear this announcement and show up on Thursday.
Thank you.
Thank you. Public comment, yes?
Richard Dubey, Precinct 6. I have spoken on this a couple of times in the past, but I'd like to give you written documentation to make my points. What you're looking at are copies of pages from the Inspector General's manual on 30B. The first one you're going to see down at the bottom, that's in yellow highlights, is in trade-ins. And it says, however, "Chapter 30B does not permit trade-ins as part of a written quote process unless the value of the supplies is less than $10,000." And your local jurisdiction's written procedures discussed earlier in the chapter specify the trade-ins are permissible. As far as I know, we don't have a written policy that says the trade-ins are permissible. We have a policy that allows Mr. Renshaw, with surplus property under $10,000, to do what he wants, but we have no policy that says trade-ins are permissible. And furthermore, this board worked very hard the last time with the firearms to prove that the firearms are valued at more than $10,000, so that we couldn't destroy them. And this portion of 30B says that, I'll repeat it again, 30B does not permit trade-ins as part of a written quote process unless the value of the supplies is less than $10,000, and your local jurisdiction's written procedures specify that trade-ins are permissible. On the following page, this was a big topic of discussion as far as aggregation, where you had to aggregate the cost. And if you look at that, it says you can advertise and bid multiple surplus supplies together. This will make sense, blah, 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 when you're doing certain things. You have the option of accepting a lump sum offer on a package of supplies, or accepting the highest bid on each individual item. This speaks directly against the concept that you all were operating under, that there was mandated to be aggregation. It's the exact opposite of that. It's telling you that if you want to do it, you can do it, but that if you get a higher price selling or trading in, if you vote for trade-in, the items individually, that's the way you go. There is no mandated aggregation by 30B. And if you'd like to, you can contact Maya French in the Inspector General's office and go over...
Thank you, Mr. Dubey. Your time is up. Is anyone else here for public comment? Yes?
Hi, I'm Rachel Lovett. I'm the Executive Director at the Falmouth Historical Society, and tonight I'm here on behalf of the 250th celebrations of the American Revolution, of which I'm on the Committee for the Town. And I wanted to give a very informal overview of what we've done so far. There's been a lot of work to put together a logo for the celebrations. Karen Ronaldo has put a lot of time and energy into a wonderful logo. As you, probably some of you know, Falmouth had the only land battle during the American Revolution, and a young boy actually warned the town about it, and the logo has to do with that particular narrative. And so there'll be a logo forthcoming with a very interesting story that we can turn into lesson plans and programming around that. So the logo will be very interesting. In terms of events that we have in the works, one thing we would really enjoy doing in April is a concert lanterns and lyrics, where we have colonial-era music paired with actors, and we talk about actual events that happened in the town of Falmouth during the American Revolution, and it culminates in a lantern lighting with faux little lanterns, and it'd be very memorable for the kids on the Village Green if we were able to do that. So that plan is going to be coming formally to you soon. We also are going to be pairing some events around a wonderful book that has recently been published, Cape Cod and the Islands in the American Revolution. And there's some local authors and historians. We're going to be having some lectures at the Historical Society. The Historical Society is also putting together an exhibition specifically on the topic of Falmouth during the revolution, and that'll open in June, and that'll be up for a whole year, so that'll be exciting. We're also going to have drop-in exhibition talks, free and open to the public for adults, and then education programs for kids. So exciting things forthcoming, but I just wanted to come here informally and say good things are happening in that regard, so.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Anyone else here for public comment? Okay, we're going to move into committee interviews, and our first interview is Gregory Baldwin here. Welcome.
Thank you.
Mr. Baldwin, and you have applied to be on the EDIC. Is there anything that is not in your resume and what you submitted to the board that you would like us to know about you?
Other than I'm a very excited and hopefully a willing and exciting participant to be a part of the EDIC, I like their mission and what they're doing as far as business development and workforce housing development, that's just something that's in my wheelhouse.
Awesome. Questions from the board?
I'm just curious about the construction experience. I see you have extensive resume, and it's impressive, but the construction is not a big part of it?
Yeah, I'm pretty new to construction. I've been in construction for a little over three years, pretty much working in Provincetown and Antucket as a general contractor, as well as a realtor. But a lot of the things that I've done is work on multi-unit housing, individual housing, pretty much all throughout Provincetown, as well as, I think, as you know, on the resume, serving on the Provincetown Planning Board and working on our Schenck Painter Road Forum overlay committee that helped us create a process to help develop a part of town into a more vibrant community. So most of my experience is more into that as far as being a general contractor and a realtor, but it's only been about three years.
That's a lot in three years, thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Would anyone like to make a motion?
I would make a motion to appoint Mr. Gregory Baldwin to a position on...
EDIC.
On the EDIC until 6:30, 26.
I'll second Mr. Brown's motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to appoint. Any further discussion amongst the board, seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
I'm going to abstain because I'm on the EDIC, so I'll abstain.
Welcome. And thank you.
But I'm glad that Mr. Baldwin's going to be on there with us. Thank you.
Thank you for your willingness to serve.
Appreciate it.
Thank you, thank you so much.
Okay, we're going to move into Police Station Advisory Committee, and I just want to make a couple of comments about this. Firstly, we have two people who have applied who cannot be here until our next meeting, which I believe is the 16th. And so we are not going to vote tonight, so I'm going to ask the board that you please hold on to your notes, and we will bring this back around for a vote, our last meeting in December. And Mr. Ripley has withdrawn his application. So up first, Robert Zolo. Welcome, Mr. Zolo. I'm going to ask you the same question. Is there anything about yourself you would like us to know that is not in your packet that you submitted to the board?
Not really, I just thank you for letting me be here. I've had the... A couple of things is, I'm familiar a little bit with the construction part. I'm a third generation with the paint contractors. We've done construction, like condominium projects. So I have a little bit of that. My main focus was the police, as a police chief. We had built a station in 2016, a brand-new one, and I have the perspective as a officer working in it and looking at things I liked, then as a supervisor, as a captain, and then as well as a chief, so I pay for the things that we didn't need or we could have used more of. So I just have that kind of unique perspective of it.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Zelinski, go ahead.
Mr. Zolo, have you toured our police station?
I have not, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Brown?
I'm interested, are you pretty familiar with Falmouth? How long you been?
I've been... So we purchased a house in East Falmouth 13 years ago, and I retired about two and a half years ago.
Okay.
We, in my... Where I was a officer for like about 20 years, we were in a building that was over 100 years old, and I have seen, you know, everyone in there for license to carry, so I haven't really had a tour, but, I mean, they just about condemned it, and that's eventually how we got the new building that we got. So I'm familiar with going from... I mean, we had an office for seven supervisors in the same room, so it was horrendous.
I was thinking more in terms of the familiarity with the town and the volume of business that our police department probably does, and as far as going forward, the future needs of the station, so.
Well, one of the things we did plan with us, again, so I'm a chief, retired chief from Wilbraham. We're adjacent to Springfield and Ludlow, so we're pretty busy. One of the things, one of the goals that we did plan the station was for expansion. So even though we had 27 full-time, we had a full dispatch center that dispatched for three, two towns full-time, Belcher Town, I'm sorry, Hamden and Wilbraham, as well as Belcher Town just for 911. We wanted expansion, so when we planned ahead, we thought of, all right, someday we're not going to only have 27, we're going to have more full-time.
Right. Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you. Mr. Muscally?
What would you say, Mrs. Zolo, is one or two, two or three of the most important items that you'd think would, you'd be focusing on as needed in a police station to service the staff or the police staff that we have here?
One of the things that... There's many things, but probably one of the... There's little things like, in the officers' lockers have batteries, have electricity in there, so they can plug their radios and their flashlights in there. Little things like that, like we used to have a central room for that. Things got missed, so now you assign the officers, you put them in there. So it's their personal gear. We had a four-bay heated garage, which had sewers, like, so we could wash the cars in the winter. One of the big things, being in a 100-year-old building, most of our stuff was outside, all our equipment, and the price of cruisers now is just crazy, leave them to the elements. So anytime the DPW in the middle of a snowstorm wanted to come plow, supervisor had to go out, clean out all the cars, start them all out, the ones that aren't used, and move those. So what we had put is an overhang, so we could park all the cruisers, but we had 15 cruisers, so now they're all protected from the elements. So, I mean, I think a heated bay is big. Showers was another thing in the locker rooms. A lot of guys were forced to do doubles during, when I was a chief during COVID. We also had a washer dryer that we had, that we just for sell blankets, but we were able to... Officers were concerned at the time to have the uniforms washed here and not take them home after being on the street. So that was another thing. We had like a state of an art lockup center that was real good and very professional.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Okay, Mr. Schwartz, you're up next.
Good evening, thanks for allowing me to present myself to serve on this committee.
Anything... I'm going to ask you the same question. Anything that you didn't submit to us that you would like us to know?
Yeah, so there's a couple of things that I can talk about as it relates specifically on the public safety front and building. So going back many, many years ago, I was involved as a city councilman in the city of Taunton when we were looking to build a public safety facility. In fact, we had, both the chairmans from the Senate came down, and I think the state's still looking at it. They were looking at a program similar to school building assistance that never came to fruition. So unfortunately, that progress really slowed, and I don't know if anyone's familiar with Taunton, but Taunton sat in a, and still sits in a temporary police station for 50 years, and actually just broke ground on a new facility. As it relates to an actual sighting and building, as the chairman of the Dayton Finance Committee, we designed, located, went through the same process that the town's going through now, and located and built a new police station that opened in 2017. So I have some familiarity, as well as, from a procurement standpoint, I have taken the first step and am certified through the first step of chief procurement through the Office of the Inspector General. So I have a long background in municipality, as well as my private sector job, which was my real job, but in municipal service for the last 30 years, whether it was the chairman of a housing authority, mostly elected and appointed positions, and have sighted numerous buildings within those. We built a maintenance facility in Taunton when I was the chairman of the Housing Authority there. We did the largest public works project when I was the chairman of the Solid Waste Committee in Taunton back in the 90s. It was the second largest public works project in the state besides the Big Dig at the time. It was a $25 million upgrade of a solid waste. So I'm familiar with building and supporting that through my municipal work.
Questions from the board? Mr. Muscally?
Mr. Schwartz, we're familiar with the work you do on the municipal light board, and that's a pretty time-consuming job. I know it has been for the past couple of years. Do you think you'd really be able to devote enough time to this as well as your duties with the MLP?
Yeah, so I do work from home. I am local, I have the flexibility. I'm a multitasker as it relates to that, and yeah, that's not an issue. That isn't, that's, that would be the last of my...
Mr. Zelinski, I'll go with you next.
Mr. Schwartz, have you toured, have you taken a tour of our present police station or had any interaction with the crew over there?
Yeah, so I have not taken a tour of the facility. I have had conversations with the chief over times at some of the road races and some of the other events around town, plus what I've read in...
Conversations about needs?
Just in general, what's going on in the police station. Because I have that familiarity and talking to different chiefs over times, and just really want to understand what goes on in town. I've been coming down here since 1970, lived here full-time for the last five years, and one of the things, if you look at my resume, is I like to get involved, I like to know what's going on in town. You know, my first year down here, I became and was elected, luckily be elected as a town meeting member, and then joined the MLP, so I try to understand the issues, and that's an old, that's an old building, and that's what happens, you outgrow it. I know the town has spent a lot of money over the years doing upgrades, but that's just Band-Aids. That's just Band-Aids.
Appreciate that, thank you, Madam Chair.
Mr. Brown, did you have anything?
Curious, do you think you have enough experience with construction blueprints and so forth to understand that aspect of it?
A basic understanding, and you know what? That's what I leave the experts to ask the questions to. And, you know, my skill set is a little different than the person that comes from, directly from the construction side, but as many building projects as I've been involved in, whether it was school buildings that we were building, or the police station that we built in Dayton, I have a basic understanding of it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Thank you, Mr. Schwartz.
Thanks for your time tonight.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move to James Morse.
Good evening, Madam Chairman, members of the board. Nice to see you all.
Welcome. Anything we need to know about you, Mr. Morse, that's not in your packet?
Just speaking as to the construction questions that other applicants have had, I'm not in the trades. My background in, with construction issues is from construction litigation, as well as experience on the zoning board. We do site plan review, look at schematics and plans at all the time, so I'm fairly comfortable looking at, looking at plans, even though I'm not actually in the construction trades.
Questions for Mr. Morse? Mr. Zelinski?
Mr. Morse, I'm going to ask the same question I've asked the other applicants about being in the Falmouth Police Station and interacting with... I know you're a defense attorney, correct?
I am.
So I know that you've interacted...
I was a police officer 24 years.
Oh, I get it. Just, when you're looking at plans, and this, I'm going to help the rest of the applicants that are coming up with this question. When you look at what we have now, as far as our booking area and our Sally Port and all of that, and all the insufficiencies that we experience now, I just want to make sure people get a clear picture when they're looking at plans and speaking with the people that have to work those areas, if you're going to... That's part of what I'd be looking for as an appointment, to be able to talk with the police chief and his staff. That's what I'm looking for in applicants for this, for this committee, so I just want to know if you'd be comfortable...
As I said, I was in law enforcement for 24 years. I was volunteer fire...
That's what I wanted to hear.
Just because you're an attorney doesn't mean, and I indicated on my application, I'm committed, just because I'm a defense attorney, and that's about 66% of my practice, doesn't mean I'm not committed to making sure that the police department in this town is well-equipped, well-trained, and properly housed in a building that, you know, that they can grow into.
That's what I wanted to get on the record, Mr. Morse, thank you.
You're not going to put an escape door out the back, huh?
No, 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 no. I might put some business cards in the lockup.
I think the other important piece to me is to make sure that this building is something that promotes the health of our officers, and I think that's the piece that really struck me when I toured that building over a year ago.
And it's something that's absolutely needed. I was, funny, George Sherrill's here. I was an Oak Bluffs officer for most of my career. We actually had a swap with the Holden Police Department when he was chief, and we actually took from them the idea of having a gym, because physically fit police officers are less prone for burnout, they don't get injured nearly as often, they have a reason to come into shift every day. So, yeah, I would agree with that completely.
Thank you. Mr. Muscally?
Well, following along on that, Jim, as a former police officer, I mean, what are some of the other things that you would think would be critical to be looking at for the benefit of the officers?
You need to make sure you have proper locker room space for both men and females, so they need to be proper meeting space to meet with victims. You need to be able to get victims out the back door so that they're not necessarily being paraded in and out of the front door of the station. They need to make sure you get sufficient infrastructure for technology. I believe we're going to body-worn cameras, that's going to take a lot of computer space. That usually has to be in a restricted area, it needs to be climate-controlled. You have evidence control issues, you need to make sure that access is restricted to the right people. I mean, I could take up 20 or 30 minutes if you'd like me to talk about this, but there are a lot of issues that are just, they're substandard in most police stations now. I've only been into central records, but I was at the Falmouth Police Station nine years ago for training, and I don't anticipate it's improved with age.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Morse.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we're going to move on to Mr. Potamos.
Jerry Potomac, and to answer your first question, the only thing I left out was, a number of years ago, I was the first value engineering coordinator with EPA, and it's, although it's primarily for manufacturing purposes, in the construction industry, it can be important, as well as CPM and other things that will dictate an efficient schedule. And I have been to the police department a couple of times, and it was moldy then.
Thank you.
Questions for Mr. Potamos?
With your long time on the CBA, I'm sure you can read the plans as well as anyone.
I'm a civil engineer.
Yeah, right.
I should hope so, and a PE.
Okay.
Any other questions?
Thanks.
You're well known. Thank you, Mr. Potamos.
Thank you.
Okay, Boyd DeMello, you're up.
Good evening, thank you for the opportunity to apply for this committee.
Welcome.
37 years in public safety, lifelong resident of the town of Falmouth. I think, to answer the question, what wasn't provided in my application, this most recent, I'm currently serving on the Sandwich Road Fire Station Committee. We're at the tail end of that. I think we're going to deliver, you know, a good product when it's all said and done. But I think one of the things that, on this project, the fire chiefs had me also serving to the regular construction meetings on a weekly basis, which has provided me with a bigger insight to the, what goes into building a public safety building. I served on the original headquarters renovation project. That was much different than this current one we're on, that was a historic building, so there's a lot of other hurdles and stuff to get around and keep a building that was on the National Historic Register intact and provide space. I think currently, yes, to Mr. Zelinski's question, I've spent some time in the police station, I'm over there, probably seven or eight times. I'm over there probably seven or eight times a week on different matters, so I'm familiar with the building. I think one of the things we learned with the Hatchfield Station was that we need to grow for the future at the same time, but have a fiduciary responsibility to the community to to provide them with a, you know, a quality building that can go forward. We're not looking at adding on to a building, you know, 10 years, 12 years down the road, but something that also can fit into what the town can afford at the same time.
And given your background in public safety and particularly responding to medical issues, just tell me what you would want in a new police station, again, that promotes the health of our officers, both the physical and psychological health.
Well, the psychological help is definitely a need in both the fire service and the police department and it's, you know, something that's finally being recognized, I think, more and more in the last few years. Facility where police officers can maintain their their physical fitness and stuff, I think is is to the forefront. Again, we have, you know, that was one of the additions to the headquarters station. We put a very large-scale gym up on the third floor. In this new station, we also, that was one of the things the committee did was incorporate a fitness room into that new station to go along with the decon facilities in the new station to cover firefighter cancer, but that goes hand in hand with those two things. So that's very important to maintaining the health of our officers.
Thank you. Any other questions?
No, I think I've got it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Okay. Tom Vos.
Hi, thank you, Tom Vos, Precinct 6.
Anything you would like to add to the paperwork you submitted to your resume that you'd like the board to know about you?
Probably not additions, but just to kind of introduce myself, I'm a licensed construction supervisor. I've been at that for about 15 years now. I have a lot of experience in, you know, reading and interpreting and building projects as well as quantitative takeoffs and budgeting and staying inside the lines. From Falmouth, town meeting member, and just look forward to the opportunity to serve.
Questions from the board. Mr. Brown?
How do you feel about the learning curve, about understanding the the needs of the police department because it's probably not something that you're really familiar with?
I I feel pretty good about it. I've, to me, it's it's a structure that is going to, you know, house its occupants and serve them well, and I think that I will adapt to that, their specific needs.
So you'd be more focused on the construction aspects and take maybe some leadership from the others on the?
Absolutely.
The other aspects of it?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Muscally.
Mr. Vos, I'm going to ask you the same question, and the reason I say this, and maybe I can be more, I can explain myself a little better. By by seeing what we have now and what we've worked under at that station, it adds context to what is needed in the future. So that's why I ask all the applicants, have you been there? Because we are, I don't want it to be personally, I don't want people to go in there and look at what they've been dealing with for years that are so old and antiquated and substandard and use that as a standard for what is needed and to be confused with being frivolous with what is status quo in in new stations today. That's what I'm looking for, looking at what we have as context to what we need in in 2025, '26 in the in the future. You understand, right?
I understand, yeah. There's a huge difference from what they have now and what they need. Absolutely.
So, yeah, frivolity isn't part of technology and 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 status quo of what's needed in the industry right now.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Any other questions or comments? Thank you, Mr. Vos.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, Xander Fucillo.
Xander had to leave because of pregnant wife.
Uh-oh. Geez. All right. We'll catch him on the next.
Okay, we'll catch him on, smart man. Okay, we'll we'll see him on the 16th. Okay, we will go to George Sherrill.
Good evening.
Welcome, Mr. Sherrill, how are you?
Fine, thank you.
Anything you would like the board to know that was not included on your resume?
No, I would just add that I grew up in this town, was born down here. My father was in the Air Force in the 50s, went to elementary school here, left for a while, did 40 years of policing, 15 years as a police chief, and then did five years in charge of college public safety in the Worcester area upon retirement. Currently working for civil service part-time doing PAT testing of new applicants. I know policing, I know the culture. I went through a building, a public safety complex in my community, Holden, and it was a 10-year journey. I visited with my lieutenant 20 to 30 police stations across the state to see what, we made a wish list, what went right, what went wrong with your new station. We made a wish list, gave this to our architect and wanted to learn from other mistakes from other departments that they made during their process and learn from that. I've been to the Falmouth Police Station several times during my many years here in the town and it's one of the worst ones I've seen right now in in the state. I've been to many, many police stations in my career and the condition is terrible. I I know what the standards are. I went through this with my department and our architect and most importantly, I think I know the police culture, what officers need for their 24-hour shifts, their 24-hour patrolling and and safety for the town.
Unfortunately, I agree with you and it's an embarrassment to this town.
It is.
My first comment. My second comment is I think that our chief of police received a very strong message from this board when he was appointed, that one of his number-one priorities needed to be that he take really good care of our officers. So what do you think that that this new building is going to need to accomplish his goal as he reports to our town manager that he is taking good care of our officers?
Right off the bat, 21st century policing is officer safety and wellness and physical fitness. That sends out a message that you care about the officers. For example, when our architect gave me my blueprints for our station, I noticed that the dining area was bigger than the gym area. And I said, no, reverse it, make the gym bigger and the dining area smaller. I want officers that are physically fit. So, you know, right off the bat, you know, show the officers that you care about them and you're investing in them.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the board?
No, I've just commented, I'm glad you came back, so thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Carissa April.
Good evening, Carissa April. I think everything is probably in my resume except that, you know, I'm just excited about this opportunity for this sort of a big, very, very big decision for the town and to be a part of the committee to help create, you know, the right solution for that. I have a really varied experience background. I was once actually a licensed construction supervisor, but that's not why I'm, you know, interested in this project. Never occurred to me. It's not on my resume. But after 23 years in the Coast Guard, the U.S. military and doing a lot of maritime law enforcement, federal law enforcement, working in first responder facilities around the country, I just think I bring a perspective that might round out the committee a little bit. I really was interested in the committee from sort of the decision-making, making problem-solving, listening aspect, collaborating with other committee members. It actually didn't occur to me that I was bringing any level of, like, a certain expertise per se, but rather a perspective as as a as a community member, a mom, a neighbor. I'm involved with the Veterans Center and we just, you know, renovated and opened a Veterans Center in town. That was the old senior center. If you want to do before and after, that's a pretty good comparison of what what used to be and what should have been or what is now for the senior center. So I'm just really interested in the opportunity to kind of be part of that, you know, looking at all perspectives and the listening team. So I wouldn't begin to try to answer what do I think the police station needs. I would say that that's what we need, the, you know, the people working there to answer and then just find a way to, you know, to really understand those needs and really make sure they're even asking for as much as they should ask for and then find a way to meet those needs.
Questions from the board?
No.
No? Mr. Brown?
Do you think you'll be okay with reading the blueprints?
I'm pretty, I can read a set of plans and when I don't know what something means, I know how to ask, but I actually grew up with a, you know, in a construction field. I'm married to a contractor. We've, you know, I've been around plans and even even just recently with the Veterans Center, I was the the number-one point of contact between the architect and the, you know, and the contractors and decision, sort of our decision makings and things like that. But sure.
Okay.
But I'll ask, I won't pretend.
Very good. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're going to move into our public hearings. And our first public hearing is.
Thank you.
It's okay. First application to transfer shellfish aquaculture license. Mr. Zalinski, for the notice, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Notice is hereby given that on September 23rd, 2024, Robert O. Sargent, 15, Jamie Lane, East Falmouth, Mass., applied person went to MGLC 130 and 57 and 60 for the transfer of a shellfish aquaculture. Alpha 17-01 from Glenn Chamberlain. The location area and description of the sites of the shellfish grant are as follows. A 1.1 acre parcel roughly 416 feet from the shore, 110 feet from the nearest navigational channel within town's waters of Nantucket Sound with the following geographic coordinates describing the corner boundaries of the project. North 41 degrees 33-085 and west 70 degrees 32-dot 786, north 41 degrees 33-dot 043, west 70 degrees 32-dot 790, north 41 degrees 33-dot 086, west 70 degrees 32-dot 756, north 41 degrees 33-040, west 70 degrees 32-dot 751. The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under MGL on 130, that's 57, on said application for shellfish grant transfer on Monday, December 2nd, 2024, at 6:45 p.m. in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall located 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. Copy of the aquaculture license application is on file at the Office of the Select Board, Licensing Board. Nancy Robbins-Taylor, Edwin P. Zalinski II, Douglas C. Brown, Robert P. Muscally, Heather M. H. Goldstone.
Is there representative for the applicant?
There better be, after all that.
Come right up to the podium, please.
That's a long notice.
That is a very long notice.
There's more to come.
Questions from the board on the application?
No, it seems like this gentleman wants to transfer it over to Mr. Sargent and I think we should keep it going.
Just a question here, three similar matters on the agenda this evening. Is there something going on in the industry that's, you know?
No, not that I know of.
Compelling these these transfers or anything?
Not that I know of. I just feel like Glenn Chamberlain, the the person that's transferring the license to me, he just, since COVID, he hasn't really been back into it and interested in doing it and it's just sitting out there kind of dead, not not much activity on it at all. And he popped, I mean, I've been waiting to do this for years because I'm I'm looking forward to the estuary, the town estuary sites that are coming in the future. And he just popped out of the woodwork and just said, hey, I'm not using mine. You want to transfer it over to you? I was like, wow, okay, great. And yeah, that's, I mean, I volunteer with the with the town, you know, Chuck and the and the DNR a lot with their with growing the oysters, seeding the oysters, all of that. I'm pretty much on almost every operation that they they perform, you know, and that's it. I just, when that popped up, for me to actually get my own area to grow, it's, I heard it's not the best site, but it's, we'll give it a shot and try it. That's that's my my goal, to try it. Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I believe you're an experienced commercial fisherman now, aren't you?
Yeah, 15 years commercial fisherman in Falmouth and a lifelong resident of Falmouth and also a U.S. Coast Guard veteran.
All right. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Comments from the public on this application? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board, seeing none? All those in favor of closing the hearing?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the board.
I would say I would move approval unless there's any other discussion.
No questions.
Okay, I have a motion to approve the application to transfer the shellfish license A 1701 for 1.1 acres in Nantucket Sound from Glenn Chamberlain to Robert O. Sargent as presented. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?
Nope.
Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Unanimous.
Good luck out there.
Thank you, good luck.
Thank you very much.
Okay, we'll move on to our second hearing. Mr. Zalinski, for the notice, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Notice is hereby given that on November 5th, 2024, David Ryan, president of Cape Cod Oyster Company located at 179 Old Falmouth Road, Marshtons Mills, Mass., applied person went to MGLC 130 and 57 and 60 for the transfer of shellfish aquaculture license. A 17-02 from Paula Miller to Cape Cod Cape Cod Oyster Company. The location area and description of the sites of the shellfish grant are as follows. A three-acre parcel with the depth of 12 to 16 feet, roughly 600 feet from the shore, west, southwest of Fiddler's Cove and northwest of Nye's Neck within the town's waters of Buzzard's Bay with the following geographic coordinates describing the corner boundaries of this project. 41 degrees by 39, 7-dot 38 north, 70 degrees 38, 30-dot 70 west, 41 degrees 39, 7-dot 77 north, 70 degrees 38, 22-dot 00 west, 41 degrees 39, 4-dot 83 north, 70 degrees 38, 22-dot 63 west, 41 degrees 39, 4-dot 87 north, 70 degrees 38, 30-dot 87 west. The Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under MGL Charlie 130 and 57 on said applications for shellfish grant transfer on Monday, December 2nd, 2024, 6:45 p.m. in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall located at 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. Copy of the aquaculture license application is on file at the Office of Select Board, Licensing Board. Nancy Robbins-Taylor, Chair, Edwin P. Zalinski II, Vice Chair, Douglas C. Brown, Robert P. Muscally, Heather M. H. Goldstone.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. Is the applicant here? Welcome.
Good evening, thank you for having me.
Questions from the board on this application? Mr. Muscally?
Could you state your name for the public, please?
Yes.
David Ryan.
Thank you.
Mr. Ryan, as I understand it, you intend to change the method of of charging here if you transfer the license or get the license transfer?
Correct.
And you have to go to the Conservation Commission?
Conservation Commission, yes.
What if they turn you down? Does, are you still going to go through with it or is it dependent on that?
I would have to restructure the the agreement I have with the Perinis. At this point, right now, we have an agreement based on me receiving the lit, the the aquaculture sites and being able to to change the culture techniques.
So it's a critical element of your plan that you get that approval from CONCON?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Other questions from the board?
No, I'd say I've seen all the letters of support for this and another transfer of license, so just that's a comment.
Any comments from the public on this application? Okay, seeing no comments from the public, I would entertain a motion to close the hearing.
So moved.
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion amongst the board.
Just wondering if, in light of what, what Mr. Ryan said, if, um, if, if we grant this and then it doesn't go through, I mean, I'm just wondering if we should maybe hold off until, uh, he goes before the CONCOM and see what their decision is before we go forward?
So I believe, Madam Chair, I, I believe December 11th is the date, and Mr. Ryan might be able to confirm that. Um, so it's, it's next week when this is gonna be heard. I, uh, there, there have been a lot of letters of support. I understand the business model changing. Um, I, I have no strong opinion whether the board wants to defer action on it tonight.
Sounds, I'm, I'm sure it's consistent with good practice in, in, in the industry.
You see, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry.
I, I have, just in my short time here, seen a lot of the, the, the transition that Mr. Ryan is proposing. Um, I forget the, the exact term of it, but the, the floating cages versus the bottom cages is kind of a, a technique that I've seen quite a bit of. So I, it's not anything, um, novel in its approach, so I don't anticipate any issues.
Is, is there a procedural reason that we should hold it up, or no?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay.
Could be conditional, too, a conditional approval.
Well, I mean, it's already conditional because he's gonna impose his own conditions. If he doesn't get it, we'll have to come back to it anyway.
I don't have a strong opinion. I just, just raised the question as, as to the timing and stuff.
The timing is a little bit unique, and we did note that in, 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 in the report that, uh, that it's getting used in.
Personally, I'd, I'd rather dispense with it while we have it here.
Me, too.
That's, that's fine. We don't need you to come back and, uh-
Okay, is that a motion, Mr. Brown?
I would make a motion to approve the application to transfer shellfish aquaculture license A 175-02 for three acres in Buzzards Bay off Fiddler's Cove and Nye's Neck from Paula Miller to Cape Cod Oyster Company as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the transfer. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're gonna go into our third hearing. Mr. Zalinski, for the notice, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Want me to read one for you?
No, I'm good. Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, notice hereby given that on November 5th, 2024, David Ryan, President of Cape Cod Oyster Company, located at 179 Old Falmouth Road, Marston's Mills, Mass., applied person went to MGL 130 and 57 and 60 for the transfer of a shellfish aquaculture license. Alpha 15-06 from Ty Perrini to Cape Cod Oyster Company. The location area and description of the sites of the shellfish grant are as follows. An upweller aquaculture site measuring 20 feet by 8 feet and fastened to a dock in McGansett Harbor with the following geographic coordinates describing the corner boundaries. 41, 38-point 799 north, 70, 37-point 716 west, 41, 38-point 799 north, 70, 37-point 02 west. Number two, a second, a, a two-acre parcel 600 feet off north of Fiddler's Cove entrance and northwest of Rans Canal entrance in the waters of McGansett Harbor with the following geographic coordinates describing the corner boundaries. Northwest 73, uh, 38-point 01824 west, 41, 39-point 188343 north, northwest 70, 37-point 942303 west, 41, 30-point 169276 north, southwest 70, 38-point 01683 west, 41, 39-point 126985 north, southeast 70, 37-point 948509 west, 41, 39-point 124783 north. The Select Board will hold a public hearing under MGL Charlie 130 and 57 on said application for shellfish grant transfer on Monday, December 2nd, 2024, at 6:45 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, Town Hall located at 59 Town Hall Square, Falmouth, Mass. Copy of the aquaculture license application is on file at the Office of the Select Board, Licensing Board. Nancy Robbins-Taylor, Chair, Edwin P. Zalinski II, Vice Chair, Douglas C. Brown, Robert P. Mascali, Heather M. H. Goldstone.
I should've taken you up on it, Doug.
Mr. Ryan, questions for the applicant?
Now, the only question I have on this one is, um, I see that the license is transferred from Ty Perrini, but the letters are from other folks saying that they're, um, not interested in continuing. So were they managing the license for Mr. Perrini? Do you know?
So it was, uh, so Paula Perrini, uh, one of the license holders is also here tonight, but sort of going to, to, uh, Mr. Moselli's question to Bobby Sargent. I, I've been working full-time in the shellfish aquaculture industry for 30 years. Um, I've been able to, to do it as a living, raise a family, but it's, it's, it's a challenging, difficult industry. It's hard to do it part-time. So many people that have tried these projects on a part-time basis, eventually it, it, you know, it doesn't work anymore. And so I think that, I think it was, it was a family effort for, for a bunch of years, but between running other businesses and, and the, the challenges of getting part-time help, um, it's, it's just a difficult venture. I've got a, a wonderful crew of highly motivated young people and, um, and we're able to do it full-time. So I'm, I'm in a position to, to turn that into a, a productive area.
I see. So it was more of a team effort previously of-
Between the, the Perrini family. Yeah.
Okay, very good. Thank you for explaining that.
Any other questions from the board? Any comments from the public regarding this application? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to close the hearing. Any further discussion amongst the board, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Discussion amongst the board.
I would just move approval unless there's any public comment. Otherwise-
Okay, there was no public comment, so we close the hearing. Do you wanna read the recommendation or the motion?
I will. I have it here.
Okay.
I make a motion to approve the application to transfer a shellfish aquaculture license A 15-06 for two acres plus a 20-by-8 upweller in McGansett Harbor from Ty Perrini to Cape Cod Oyster Company as presented.
I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, our next hearing. This is gonna be easier, I think, Mr. Zalinski. It's a wetlands dock hearing, and I think we have Mr. Boselli, so Mr. Zalinski, for the notice.
Madam Chair, the Falmouth Select Board will hold a public hearing under Section 240-14.8 Wetlands Regulation of the zoning bylaws of the town of Falmouth on Monday, December 2nd, 2024, 6:45 PM in the Select Board Meeting Room, Falmouth Town Hall, 59 Town Hall Square, on the application of Leonard C. Junior and Patricia A. Bassett for permission to maintain an existing seasonal pier located at 465 Courier Road, East Falmouth, Mass. Area affected is a Schumett Pond. Interested parties may review the file on the application at the Office of the Select Board per order of the Select Board. Publication dates Friday, November 15th, 2024, and Friday, November 22nd, 2024, Falmouth Enterprise.
Thank you, Mr. Zalinski. Mr. Boselli?
Thank you, Chairperson Taylor. Members of the board, for the record, Mike Boselli, Falmouth Engineering, and I represent the applicant. I'm here tonight asking for permission for an existing seasonal, uh, pier to remain in place so that we can proceed with, uh, getting it licensed through the State Division of Wetlands and Waterways in accordance with Chapter 91. The, um, good folks at the Conservation Commission, uh, notified my client that he didn't have permission, proper permits to have the seasonal dock, uh, on Schumett Pond. So, um, we applied to the Conservation Commission for permission to allow this to be on Schumett Pond, and the Conservation Commission, uh, voted to approve it and issued an order of conditions. It's a, it's a lightweight, um, pier made out of aluminum that is removed seasonally. I have a photo just for reference, so you can see what it looks like. It's basically a gangway and some lightweight sections of aluminum, and this boat ties to the side of it, and, um, the family has used it for decades where, and, where, had a, had an older permit, but, uh, for a smaller structure, but did not have permission for this, um, walkway. So, um, they needed to get permission from the Conservation Commission, and, uh, in order to proceed with the Chapter 91 license, we would need you to issue permission for it to remain after the fact.
Questions from the board? Mr. Brown?
Were those, uh, posts just screw in?
They're actually feet that just sit on the bottom. It's a very gravelly, uh, rocky bottom, so they just, aluminum, like, two-inch diameter aluminum pipes with square, like, six-by-six feet that just sit on the bottom.
It's pretty low impact, huh?
Very low impact, um, no jetting, removing driving pilings. You just disassemble each section and carry it and store it in the upland.
Okay.
Mr. Mascali?
Just the, the purpose of the eight-foot extension, why is that necessary?
Thank you for that. Um, ironically, the Conservation Commission asked us to make it a little bit longer, which is not typical, but that was, um, just to get a, a little bit more water depth at the end. So that was, that was the recommendation. There's no issues with shellfish or anything like that here, but it allowed for a little bit deeper water where the propellers are.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board? Any comments from the public on this application? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Discussion amongst the board?
I don't see any reason to deny it. It seems like a good straightforward application. CONCOM has approved it and, uh, it looks like an improvement.
I would agree with you, Mr. Mascali. Would anyone like to read a motion?
As soon as I find it.
I'll, uh, make the motion, if you will, that we approve the application submitted by Falmouth Engineering on behalf of Leonard C. Junior and Patricia A. Bassett, Bassett Family Trust, to maintain an existing seasonal pier and add an eight-foot section into a Schumett Pond located at 465 Courier Road, East Falmouth, as presented.
I'd second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board, seeing none? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Thank you.
Very much.
Okay, we're gonna move into business, and our first item of business is report from the Community Preservation Committee, and I see Sandy Cuny is here.
Sorry.
That's okay. I've slated you for 15 minutes.
It is, yep.
Good evening. Sandy Cuny, Chairman of the Community Preservation Committee. I am here for our annual report to the Select Board, wonderfully put together by Maureen Thomas, who couldn't be here tonight, so that's why I'm here. I'm not sure I got this right. Here's our current CPC members. There are four at large. There are five that are appointed from their designated committees, one from Recreation, one from the Housing Authority, one from Conservation, one from Historic Commission, and the Planning Board is vacant at, at this moment, but we hope to have somebody on board soon. Robert Mascali is our liaison from the Select Board, and we do thank you for attending our meetings. We appreciate your support. Thank you. This is the CP sun revenues. As you know, it's been in effect for 20 years, from 2005 to 2025. This just gives you the figures of, uh, the local surcharge, the, what we've appropriated, over $52,600. The CPA distribution was over $19,700, and we are totaling at $72,480,000 for all those wonderful projects that we have been doing over the years. This is the distribution throughout the town, kinda shows you color-coded, um, where, where they have been located, all around town, which is great. This is our pie chart. As you can see, the land bank debt is the largest, then community housing, then open space, recreation. The town has set aside all the funds that are needed to service the land bank, land, land bank debt, which will be paid off in fiscal year 2035. This is just another way of looking at the pie chart, except that we put the figures to it. This is how much money has been spent in each category, and you go all the way down to administration, which is the lowest number, but I gotta tell you, that position is really, really crucial, and Maureen Thompson has done an amazing job, and everybody who has sat in that seat over the years, um, I don't think the committee could do it without them. So we wanna thank all of them. Okay, this is just a look at what was funded this past year, April Town Meeting. Give you a little overview of what, what has happened, and these, the old skate park rehabilitation should be coming up next year to get fixed. November, we just had November. We had the built-out Tower Tennis Courts, the 82,000 is the monies that was needed to, um, we can start the project now. We'll have enough money to complete it. Community play, play space, as you know, was just the, uh, design money left over from the Davisville that was transferred to Goodwill Park, um, and so on and so forth. And Chiverick's Pond, I will say, that'll be nice. We'll get our fishing platform now, and that Phase 1 will be completed. Now, this is the first of two pages of what you have coming. So these is the applications that we've been going through now. We're 15 eligible applications, and so this is what's coming before us. Some of these, um, we've, we've just been debating the, we've done interviews. The reading material was like this. Uh, then we interviewed everyone, we did site visits, and, um, some of them we've asked to, um, have a little less money because the 15 applications total over $7 million. And so to have enough money to be able to fund a lot of these projects, we have, like, the YMCA, we asked them to go in phases. So that's that, and then this is the, the other four. There was 11 on the first page, so there's your 15. And then we had a request from the Falmouth Affordable Housing Fund for 1.5 million, which, um, we hope Town Meeting will pass, and our CP budget. So there'll be a total of 17 CPC articles coming up in April Town Meeting. Hopefully, um, there won't be a whole lot of questions on them, but if anybody has any questions now on any of them, they can contact Maureen at the CPC office. So we have our funding rounds. So next year, we'll have, we'll do our April 2025, the articles you just saw. Then we'll have the November, um, Town Meeting, and that's for time urgent projects only. Uh, deadline for that is in mid-April, and then there's the list of time urgent criteria. It's a, if it's a risk of significant loss of funding, a risk to the public safety, or a risk of damage or loss to a town asset, or an unforeseen necessity uncovered during implementation of a previously funded project, or the expansion of the project's work. So those are the, the way that we'll take those, and then all other projects would be for April Town Meeting, and the deadline for that is in mid-August. And then these are just some lovely pictures of things that we've done in town. I will say, in all the years, um, it's amazing, the project- I will say, in all the years, it's amazing, the projects that we have completed. So that ends my slideshow. Do you have any questions?
Questions from the board? Comments? Mr. Brown?
Did I hear you right, Sandy, that you're going to keep the 15 probably and just ask them to all scale back a little?
We've already done that. We've had our interviews with them, we've asked them. We've actually, our last meeting did agree on funding for all 17 articles. So what we'll do at our next meeting now, we'll get the articles ready, we'll get our recommendations, our explanations, and we'll have everything in place. We have to have it done by January, right? For April Town Meeting.
Great.
So yes, it looks like they'll all they'll all be getting something.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions from the board? Comments?
I just, I have one more comment. I don't know if it's going to be the committee that does it or this board, but I think that going forward, if we do fund more of these like historic type projects, that we should ask for a right of first refusal on a deed, a case of property becomes sold. If we fund something that we think is sort of a public use, and then realize that there's a chance that maybe it's not going to be staying in the public service, we should probably ask for that, you know, some way to get a better grip on money that we put out.
You talking about the the sale in Woods Hole?
Well, it just brought up the example of.
Because that is deed restricted. So that's protected.
Yeah, the work is protected.
Right.
But not the money itself, you know? We get the value, we get to see the beautiful building.
Right.
But I just, maybe it's something, maybe it's not possible, but probably something we should talk about at least.
Right.
Because sometimes we do fund private or.
And the other thing we might want to look at in the future, too, is the historical buildings that we own that need major repair, that there's two of them coming up. They're used by, you know, like the Falmouth Chambers, one, and the North Falmouth Village Association's the other. And both those buildings are historic buildings that probably you don't know until it's too late, but the major repairs, major repairs, so it's a lot of money. So we might want to start making a list of some of those buildings so that we're not, it's not all CPC funds, that maybe we can plan down the road of how we can be planning to do capital improvements on them.
Like the old Water Department building?
Yeah.
That's historic.
So I think the CPC is going to just send a letter of, you know, just to bring that out.
Just a, that's an excellent point that Mrs. Cuney just made, and the building assessment, that condition index that that we're going to be launching here very shortly. We have a consultant contractor that's going to be assisting, is going to provide that information.
Right.
Look at the majority of the town-owned buildings, and then allow us to kind of program based on priority need, those system repairs, so that we're not, like Sandy mentioned, looking at a building and massive repair costs, renovation costs, restoration costs. We can kind of piece it out and program those costs out over time, based on priorities, right?
And maintaining them.
And then maintain them. That's that's the goal, is ultimately to have that, once you have it the condition you want it at, maintaining that over over years.
Mr. Mascali, did you have a comment?
No, only to echo what Mr. Renshaw said, and I know that was one of his priorities when he when he came on, was to get that inventory and assessment of the public buildings so that we're not faced with these exigent situations that cost a lot of money and need need to be handled quickly. So, in response to Sandy's point.
And and no surprises?
And no surprise.
What we need to be doing.
Or less.
But anyway, this is, the committee has done a great job. This was a lot of work. This was probably the biggest round I've ever seen. I hope that we don't have this every time. But Maureen Thomas did an amazing job in helping us navigate through that, because they all have to be eligible first. So you get them, they're this thick, you got to go through them, you got to make sure they're eligible. And we do have an historic consultant that we pay that helps us with the historic buildings. And every one of them, the applications were all done just to the right standards, so.
We've been lucky with a lot of good administrators in CPC.
The projects we've done are amazing, so. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you so much. Thank you for your work. Okay, we're going to go to business number two, discuss and consider Falmouth Country Club Golf Course lease extension. And I'm going to throw this over to Mr. Johnson Staub, who's been working on it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as the board is aware at this point, unfortunately, we did not receive any proposals in response to the request for proposals issued to lease the Falmouth Country Club. We did get word of that just before the submission deadline. And what we learned through the process is that we were too aggressive with our minimum requirements for the financial provisions. We knew going into this that there were a limited number of qualified golf management companies that might be interested. And so the challenge there is, if you set the minimums too low, you may not get full value because there's limited competition. So, you know, we tried to thread the needle and be aggressive with our minimums without scaring off all of the potential bidders. We missed. We scared off all the potential bidders. So unfortunately, we will need to reissue an RFP to pursue a long-term lease. And in the interim, we are here tonight to talk about a one-year extension with the current operator. And you have in your packet a proposal we received from Trune Indigo Sports to extend the agreement by one year. We we did consult with legal counsel, and we are able to do a one-year extension because the original RFP that resulted in the current lease actually contemplated a lease up to 15 years with renewals. Now, when the lease was actually awarded, it was only one renewal, so a five-year plus a five-year renewal, total of 10. But notice was given to potential bidders back at that time, so we do have the ability to extend this lease. We have, in just talking about the parameters with with Town Council, Mara O'Keefe, she, what she indicated is that we can make some changes to the terms of the lease, but you want, we want to try to keep them as limited as we feasibly can. A lot has changed in 10 years. The financials have changed quite a bit. The revenues have gone up 50%. The the expenses to operate the course similarly have gone up substantially over that 10-year period. So in order to make it financially viable for the operator, we do need to change the the financial terms of the lease. And before you is is an outline, and I'll summarize just very briefly to say, the one year extension involves the town receiving about $300,000 less in revenue based on estimated future, based on what the, we anticipate the gross revenues will be, specifically what Trune anticipates the gross revenues will be next year. We think their proposal is, for the most part, pretty reasonable. We do have a couple of items that we want to negotiate with them. One is that whereas for the past five years, the town has allocated $50,000 per year for equipment, this year, we actually received Town Meeting approval for $195,000 in course improvements, not equipment improvements. So in order to, you know, we want to talk to them about that equipment contribution, partly in addition to the fact that we've already committed those capital funds, the timing also doesn't work, because, you know, we don't have, we would have to go to Town Meeting to appropriate additional capital funds in April. One of the more tricky pieces of this one-year extension is that the operator has a five-year golf cart lease, which expires at the end of this calendar year, and they need golf courts, golf carts obviously to operate the lease. And in order to make that financially attractive, they want to enter a five-year lease, but they can't really do that on their own without knowing what's going to happen at the end of that one year. So they gave, they suggested two options, one of which, in talking to Town Council, we do believe is viable, and that is, we can require, in the next request for proposals, that the future tenant take over that golf cart lease. That will just be one of the requirements, that they have to assume that lease. And they're, you know, the future operator will need a golf cart lease in any event. So we think that's viable.
Is it not possible for them to get just a one-year lease for the golf carts? Do they have to go five years?
I assume it probably is, but the the cost on that on that is going to be very challenging. So I think there's probably a mutual interest, you know, if they're going to, you know, I don't know exactly what the pricing is, but if they have to pay that much more, they're going to be looking to get that revenue back in order to make the whole package work for them.
So the.
Oh, go ahead. No, go ahead, Mr. Mascali.
The biggest change is in the threshold, right, and how the gross revenue.
That's right.
Right now, it's $1,420,000. They're proposing to put it up to $2 million.
Right, and that they have a two-tier.
And a two, and then something between $2 million and above. So so the, we'll be getting a lot less under the revenue share, and you said approximately $300,000.
Correct. Yep.
And we could go five years, is that correct?
So legal, so here's the catch. Yes, if, let me answer it this way. If Trune were willing to extend the lease by five years with no changes to the terms of the lease, clearly, we could do that. They're not willing to do that, because the money doesn't work anymore with the old terms. You know, the revenue share threshold of the of the expiring lease is is not economic for them anymore. So where we're, you know, really needing to make substantial changes to the terms of the lease in order to extend it, the, it's an exigency that we're extending by one year with some changes to the financial terms. And within the spirit of the procurement law, you know, that's sort of the best that we can do, and it and it fits. But to do it for five years with those dramatic changes in the financial terms, you know, A, it's, you know, it's arguably not within the spirit of the of the procurement law. And B, we, you know, we don't feel that's in the town's best interest, because we still believe that a 25-year lease, a longer lease that allows for the operator to make substantial investments of their own in capital improvements, and then get the value back from those capital improvements, because they have that, you know, they're the, they're the operator and they're getting the revenues over that, over a 25-year period. We continue to feel that that's the better approach, long term.
I just got my answer.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Mascali?
We're not being asked to to decide this evening, as I understand it, because you're going to go back to Trune with the counter proposals, if you will, and come back to us on December 16 for a decision.
This part of, this is part of the motion to allow them to negotiate that, is a motion to be made tonight, correct?
Exactly right, and thank you, because I forgot that in my introduction.
That's all I did, yeah.
We wanted to present it to the board, you know, get some initial reaction, and and seek your approval to go ahead and negotiate some of the the final terms of the lease.
What are our options if Trune says no? You know, and I know it's mentioned in Renshaw's recommendations or outline, we might have to close the course at the end of December.
That's right.
I mean, have we made any contingencies or thought anything about that? What might happen?
So, I mean, we've, you know, we've given it some thought, and we don't like that option very much.
No, it does.
There'll be a lot of golfers who would be disappointed. But, you know, you, you know, you close the, you close, lock the gate, secure the, you know, secure the entrance to cars, anyway. One of the, you know, one of the challenges is going to be, you know, preventing people from walking onto the course and just playing.
Yeah, people might actually like that.
Damaging the course, you know, it's.
And liability on the part of the town.
Absolutely.
Huge, obviously.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I was going to suggest, maybe we would consider the five-year lease and make more of a commitment to do repairs or capital improvements of our own, but I wouldn't think that that's, I wasn't really suggesting it, I was just thinking it through, but it's probably not practical, because the operator can probably do them more cost effectively than we can.
Yeah, I I think that's true. And there are a lot of details to that, which I won't get into around procurement laws. But I also wanted to to emphasize that one of our challenges, I think you know this, one of our challenges with looking at our 10-year capital plan, $740 million, it's a lot of money. That's certainly one challenge. But another really big challenge is managing and overseeing all that work.
Right.
So this is an opportunity to say, let's allow the private operator to oversee the work and have them sink or swim based on the success of their own capital projects.
Right. I would encourage you to be generous with the lease, because as Mr. Mascali pointed out, we don't want it to close, and it's only a year, so keep it moving and.
I hate to prolong the discussion, but but to be fair, when you set out the RFP, it was looking at the history of the country club for the past years. So, you know, I, you know, I'm just surprised that they're saying now, you know, that they can't make any money, whereas, you know, I mean, I realize golf is a cyclical sport, of course, and and whatnot, but I mean, you were very, you were, you didn't come up with these numbers out of the clear blue. You you were looking at past performance and based your RFP on that. Kind of surprising that, you know, that that's, there hasn't gotten more interest, let's put it that way.
Yeah, I was I was surprised and disappointed myself, and I think what it speaks to is that the, just as the revenue spiked, the the costs apparently have really gone up markedly in, I don't know about in lockstep, but over that same period of time, because that was exactly my logic. I looked at, you know, five years ago, they renewed, and I thought the terms that we were offering now were more generous than five years ago, but apparently, it wasn't enough.
Thank you. Especially when you think in long term, you got to be safe.
Yeah.
If you look at the historic trend, that's more, less profitable historically and more volatile. So if they're going to commit to 25 years, they got to make sure they're safe.
Madam Chair, would you entertain a motion?
I will.
Motion to negotiate a one-year lease extension to be voted by the Select Board December 16, 2024, and issue a new RFP to the first half of 2025?
I'd second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Unanimous, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to business number three. Consider approval of an application for a second-hand dealer's license, Flying Bridge Marina LLC, 250 Scranton Nav Falmouth. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The applicant, Mr. Mark Pogosian, who is listed as the owner of Flying Bridge Marina LLC. Back on November 5th, submitted the attached second-hand dealer license application to the Select Board Office. The application has the type of goods sold as motorboat vehicles. Falmouth PD has reviewed the application and has no objections or concerns with regards to its approval. The Falmouth Fire Rescue Department has also reviewed the application and also has no objections. Our harbor master has reviewed the application, has no issues or objections to its approval, however stated in a note, as a reminder to the applicant to display valid registration. So, Madam Chair, Select Board, my recommendation is that the Select Board approve the issuance of a second-hand dealer license for Flying Bridge Marina LLC, located at 250 Scranton Avenue, Falmouth.
I know the applicant is here, but do we have any questions?
I just have a question about how it would operate. Would it be like boats in the parking lot with a for-sale sign, or are they going to mostly be in the water?
Just just introduce yourself.
Sorry.
Thanks.
Good evening. For the record, Mark Pogosian with the Flying Bridge Marina. So we have locations all over New England. So we have a marina that we're opening in Tiberton, Rhode Island. We've got a location in Fairhaven, which is a big boatyard. We also have different locations up in north of Boston. So the brands that we'll be carrying are represented and stored in primarily other locations with a few boats. We can't give up the parking for the restaurant space. So the parking's really small boats inside the structure, and then one or two around it. So that'll always vary depending on time of year. So in the winter, we have some boats that are stored outside, up on, you know, dry dock when the season gets quieter for the restaurant.
I see, so your dealer licenses will be held here, but may cover other areas, is that?
That's right. So our territory is New England for most of the brands.
Okay.
So we're covering from the Newport Boat Show to Boston Boat Show, and we even have the crews travel down to the Florida shows. So we're, we're around, but our home is Falmouth, so that's why we chose this to be our place of doing business.
Got it.
Any other questions?
I just have a clarification. So so the the licenses for boats and trailers only?
As opposed to motor vehicles?
Well, that's how it's described.
Yeah.
So.
Yes.
And it is, it's written in kind of a weird way, but that is the legal language.
We've run into that language before, and I just want to get it on the record.
And I appreciate that, because it is, it is confusing. And I appreciate that because it is, it is confusing, I think you understand it and management understands it, but the way it's written is a little weird.
Thank you.
So, thank you.
So, one more question.
Go ahead.
I guess I'm being nosy, but why is it only second-hand? Why not just?
Because the sec, we're not manufacturing them, so we're the dealer but not the manufacturer.
I see.
So, even though it's a new boat-
So they're not used necessarily?
No, they're all brand-new, the ones we're selling, but the term is a little bit misleading.
But they're sold to you first and then you have to resell them.
That's right, technically, the registration's the first one, but they're on my credit line or I paid for them before I now am selling them.
And now they're second-hand.
I think we need to stay, change the language in the state laws here.
Yeah, it's weird, we're just saying, yeah, we have licenses to do second-hand boats, here's your new boat.
Why am I paying so much?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Okay, thank you for that.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Go ahead, Mr. Muscally.
That we approve the issuance of a second-hand dealer license for Flying Bridge Marina LLC, 250 Scranton Nav, Falmouth, as presented.
I'd second that.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye.
Thank you.
Unanimous. Good luck. Okay, we're going to move to consider approval of an application for a common victual license, Cravings Pizza and Ice Cream LLC, doing business as Simply Divine Pizza, 271 Main Street, Falmouth. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Leah Lombardi, who is the applicant and managing partner of Cravings Pizza and Ice Cream, doing business as Simply Divine Pizza Company, submitted the completed application, common victual or an eligible license application back on October 30th of this year. There's notes in your folder in the file tonight stating that a closing on the sale of property is going to be scheduled upon approval of this common victual license being approved, and a fully executed lease agreement would be made available at that time. Based upon notes in the application, the applicant intends to apply for an all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license. A health inspection is currently pending, I understand it's scheduled. The police department and fire rescue departments have both reviewed the application and have stated no objections to its approval, and the health department has reviewed the application and again has no issues pending the results of the health inspection and the issuance of a permit. Recommending that the Select Board approve the application for a common victual license to Cravings Pizza and Ice Cream LLC, doing business as Simply Divine Pizza Company, located at 271 Main Street in Falmouth, as presented.
Questions?
No, it looks like it's pretty much the same operation. I saw the floor plan looked the same, I don't see any mention of any real changes except some menu items.
Anyone like to make a motion?
I would move approval. I motion to approve the application for a common victual license for Cravings Pizza and Ice Cream LLC, DBA Simply Divine Pizza Co., 271 Main Street, Falmouth, as presented.
I'll second that emo, second that motion.
Did you almost say second that emotion?
I did.
Mr. Muscally, do you want to hum a few bars?
You weren't going to let him get away with that, were you?
Absolutely.
I don't let him get away with anything. Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. I love their pizza. Okay, we're going to move on to consider approval of an application for a change of manager of an all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license, the Cape Club located at 125 Falmouth Woods Road, East Falmouth. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The proposed new manager's name is Mr. David Hamel, and the last approved manager was a Mary Lunn. Cape Cod Club Incorporated filed its required ABCC change of license for management form on November 1st of this year. Falmouth PD and fire rescue departments have reviewed the application and have no objections to the approval of the application. There's notes in your folder this evening stating that a background check was conducted on Mr. Hamel and the results did not locate any information that would disqualify him as an applicant. My office is recommending the Select Board approve the application for a change of manager of an all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license filed by the Cape Cod Club located at 125 Falmouth Woods Road, East Falmouth, as presented.
Questions from the board? Comments from the board?
I just did note that the manager, I believe, is up in Buzzards Bay, not too far away.
Yes.
That's good.
Anything else from the board?
Nope.
Okay, I would entertain a motion.
I would move approval, uh, let's see, let me find the written motion. I guess first we should say you, are you going to be responsible for the alcohol service?
Yes.
Okay.
Completely.
I make a motion to approve the application for a change of manager of an all-alcoholic beverages restaurant license filed by the Cape Cod Club located at 125 Falmouth Road, Falmouth Woods Road, East Falmouth, as presented. I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Good luck.
Good luck.
Okay, announce annual 2025 town meeting schedule. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. In your packets this evening is a copy of our proposed schedule for April 2025 town meeting. I want to thank Diane Davidson, the office manager, for putting this together. We feel that it lines up well with the April 7th, 2025 annual town meeting date that was recently announced by the chair at November town meeting. Madam Chair, Select Board, the proposed schedule is very similar to the one adopted for the April 2024 town meeting. Dates for the Select Board actions align very well with the draft Select Board meeting schedule for 2025 included in this meeting packet. And it's my recommendation the Select Board vote to adopt the April 2025 annual town meeting schedule as submitted tonight.
Discussion amongst the board.
Well, we did receive a notice today from Pamela Rothstein mentioning that there are some conflict-
That's our calendar, that's different. That's our next one.
So the comment-
I've got that.
Oh, excuse me, tell me.
I did, that is fair. I did make the comment that it aligns well, and that was a point that was brought up by a couple of folks this afternoon, so we're going to-
That's exactly-
Sorry.
Nope.
Make those corrections.
I'm going to move that, that we adopt the April 2025 town meeting schedule as submitted.
Second, I agree.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Okay, now, we have our next item, which is to discuss and consider voting the 2025 Select Board meeting calendar. We are not voting this tonight.
Okay.
I would like you to take it home and look at it. We did have some concerns, and this bothers me that we, we scheduled some things on some Jewish holidays, that, that's unacceptable. So take it home, take a look at it, we're going to go through it again, and we're going to make some changes. We'll bring you back the count, the corrected calendar on the 16th.
And there may be some other things that maybe we look a little more carefully at.
Absolutely, there are, there are some other-
And this did look like a great layout, but-
I mean, only one meeting in May is, is a problem, or prob, maybe problematic.
Could be.
That's what, what, you know, struck out to me.
So I think we need to look at it and it, I think we need to be a little bit more careful about not just turning it over.
And even if we made a shift here or there, to do two weeks in a row if needed, or skip a week, or something like that.
We could definitely accommodate everyone.
Because generally, the layout is good.
Mm-hmm.
Sure.
But we do need to make some accommodations. So we will bring that back to you on the 16th, and I'm going to move on to the consent agenda. I'll, I'll read each item. If any board member would like to hold an item, please notify me. Okay, under licenses, consider approval of the resubmission of an application filed by the Woods Hole Golf Club, Inc., 130 Chrisadav Woods Hole, for a change of officer's director to its all-alcoholic beverages nonprofit club license. Administrative orders, consider authorization to apply to the Falmouth Road Race for a grant to support upgrades to the original town skate park. Consider to, consider vote to accept a donation from the Falmouth Running Club in the amount of $500 to the town Falmouth Bike Ped Committee for Cape Cod Marathon volunteers. Consider approval of the petition of N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource, for permission to install approximately 713 feet of four-to-six-feet conduit under the town road of Surf Drive. Inch, that would be big. Surf Drive and install one new manhole is labeled 7,020-20. This work is necessary for the Falm, for Falmouth to Martha's Vineyard Submarine Cable Project. Consider approval of the petition of N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy, for permission to install a 30-foot, one-to-three-inch PVC conduit under town road and install one new manhole to be labeled 353-H4. This work is necessary to provide electric service to 63 Bayside Drive. Consider approval of the petition of N-Star Electric Company, doing business as EverSource Energy and Verizon New England, Inc., for permission to install one new midspan JO pole to be labeled 54918-5, approximately 75 feet southwest of existing pole 54918. This pole location is necessary to provide electric service to 100 Madeleine Road. Consider request to apply for grant funds from the Executive Office of Housing and Livable Communities District Local Technical Assistant, DTLA, DLTA, Program for the Development of Design Guidelines for the Planning Board. Consider approval of the first 20-acre North Falmouth Woodlands Conservation Restriction, 48 Benjamin Nyes Lane, Lot 5.
Madam Chair, I move the consent agenda.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to move the consent agenda as posted. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Unanimous, thank you. Okay, we're going to move on to the minutes. Did everybody have the opportunity to take a look at the minutes?
Yes, I noticed a couple of minor things in the strategic planning session.
Okay.
On page one, the second to the last paragraph, the school budget discussion, I think it should include mention of the fact that there was, I mentioned that we would likely have to be talking to the school committee about potentially downsizing and maybe repurposing a building, and it was funny timing because shortly after that, they announced it. I didn't have any knowledge of that, it's just, so I mean, I think it's something that should be reflected in the minutes. Then the second one was, in the last paragraph, I mentioned that-
Which, which?
On the same page.
Okay.
Strategic planning, page one, but the, the last paragraph said we would likely need additional staffing, but what I meant to say, or I think I said, was additional staffing for the police department. And I don't think that was mentioned in that paragraph.
Okay.
And that's all I have.
For all of the minutes, Mr. Brown?
Yes.
You're good, okay. Anybody else see anything? Okay, so I would entertain a motion to move the minutes as amended.
So moved, I'll second it.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to move the public session minutes of meetings, July 1, 2024, August 24, 24, November 4, 24. Any further discussion amongst the board? Seeing none, all those in favor? Aye. Minutes removed. Town manager's supplemental report. Mr. Renshaw?
Thank you, Madam Chair. A couple of quick items. Over the past several months, I've been working with the municipal light board, Mr. Ed Schwartz, the chair, and, and his group, and the Cape Cod Commission. As you all probably recall, the MLB was awarded a planning grant, Digital Equity Community Planning Grant, funded by the Massachusetts Broadband Institute, the MBI. My announcement, more of an announcement, is that next Wednesday, December 11th, between 5:30 and 7:30, there's a very important community workshop being held at the Library Herman Meeting Room. Again, next Wednesday, December 11th, from 5:30 to 7:30. It's going to give folks in the community an opportunity to come and learn about digital divide, equity issues, hear about some existing data, but the true focus of the workshop is to solicit input from residents and learn their stories about digital equity, lack of perhaps, and where, where, where there are gaps and hopefully how we can close those gaps. So again, a pitch to the community, come out next Wednesday, December 11th, from 5:30 to 7:30, in the Herman Meeting Room of the Falmouth Public Library. We hope to see a lot of folks there. Food and beverages will be served. The other quick update, just want to let the board know that in collaboration with the chair, I've developed a list of key focus areas for the upcoming year, so I'm excited to get working on those, and I'll, I'll share more on that at a future date. But we do have those key focus areas worked out, things for me to focus on in the upcoming year.
Great.
Great, we're, you know, we're all thinking about evaluation next spring, and one of the things that we talked about at our Wednesday meeting was focusing our work, the town manager's work and coming up with key priorities, so that's, that's kind of how that, that grew out. Select Board reports, I, I actually will start. I just want to remind everybody that we have our workshop this Saturday, the 7th, at 8:00. It will be a, it's an open meeting, however, there will be no public comment, and we have Attorney Bill Sinot. I sent you his biography, so you could, you would see who he is and his work with municipalities, and I think it will be a very productive meeting on Saturday.
And so the reference for that is the Mass Select Board Members Handbook?
That's, we will be looking at the Mass Select Board Handbook. He took a look at our onboarding packet, and we're just going to talk about how we can, how we function both as individuals, as select people, and as a board, and also how we can work closely with town management in supporting them.
I'd be interested to hear his take on our onboarding packet.
He has it. I sent that to, to him a bit ago, and also you all got a copy of the, I'm glad you brought that up, the Mass Handbook for Select Boards, and, you know, bring that with you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, that's all I have. Mr. Zlinski, Mr. Brown?
I'd like to report that we had a wonderful Thanksgiving and it was really nice.
Great.
I was going to report on the CPC and the 250th anniversary, but people before me spoke, spoke, said what I was going to say.
You jumped ahead.
No, 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 no reports here.
I'm glad they're going to focus on that little story we-
Well, that was your idea.
That was your idea. You gave them the directive.
I'm happy with it.
Just kidding. Before we, before I entertain a motion to adjourn, Mr. Muscally, I really would like you to sing for us.
I second that motion.
I, I heard it, I absolutely heard it. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'd, I'd second that emotion.
Okay. Now I can't say it, a motion and a second. Any further discussion amongst the board?